Good evening. I would like to call to order the Huntsville Independent School District Board of Trustees meeting for tonight. Ms. Angie, we do have a quorum. Ms. Schweitzer and Ms. Rissy Owens will be absent today. And then also Mr. Hendrix will be on the way, but we do have a quorum to start the meeting. Dr. Shepherd, has certification that public notice of this meeting was it given in accordance with the provision of Section 551.002 of the Texas Government Code?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. We will have our prayer and pledges, so if you'll please stand. And Mr. Langley?
Let's pray. I, Father, we thank you for this day. God, we thank you for our safe trip for our board this past week going to San Antonio. We thank you for the education that we received from throughout those meetings that we can bring it back and share it with our district. And we thank you for watching over our young people through this summer. We ask you to be with our staff, be with the entire district that will be rested and ready to start again the next school year. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join us for the pledges. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now to the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Thank you. You may be seated.
Ms. Angie, please note that Mr. Hendrix has joined us. Thank you. All right. Trustees, it is our opportunity to have any comments at this time. Any board members have comments? Mr. Langley, you did emphasize that we were in San Antonio for our conference. There was a lot of great information. And one of the things that every time we go to these conferences, that when we come back, and too, we had all board members present at the conference, which was, per your historical data, was...
It hadn't happened in 25 years.
So that's pretty impressive. But we learn a lot. We get to spend time with one another, but it's always refreshing to know that we get to serve in Huntsville. A lot of districts are going through some things and struggles, and I feel very fortunate that we're here where we're at and doing the things that we're doing. So I appreciate all of us being there and having that time together. Any other...
Did you want me to speak? Move on.
No. You already prayed. Mr. Langley, if there's no other comments, Dr. Shepherd, you have a briefing.
Yes, sir. I will echo those sentiments about Summer Leadership Institute. It was really impressive to have our entire board there. We had a great time and learned a lot. Legislative sessions tend to bring out a bigger crowd to summer workshops for board members. There was quite a bit of conversation about the historically large number of bills impacting public ed that this legislature sent on to the governor. And so there's a lot of unpacking and rulemaking yet from TEA and a lot of summer work. I mean, quite frankly, it's... Summers are always busy, but summers after a legislative session are remarkably busy. So we have a great team, great board, really fun to spend time with them, very proud of our team. It's great to have the whole group there, representing the community extremely well. My only other comment is going to be that, you know, we'll do a formal recognition at a later meeting, but you might notice we've done some rearranging up here so that we could get rid of that little awkward, like, other desk we had down here. And so we've kind of moved some people around, partly to welcome two new cabinet members and senior leaders for our district over here, Paul Trevino and Josh Campbell, who are kind of joining us in the corner. So if y'all give them a round of applause for their... And we'll do a more formal recognition when we get closer to school, when more people start coming back to board meetings. In summertime, it's pretty lean in terms of attendance at board meetings. And that's my report. As always, Stingam Hornets.
Thank you, Dr. Shepherd. Next, we move to our monthly digital report, and as Matthew re-enters the room. Matthew, we look forward to your report.
I hope you like it. Good evening. Good evening, President Holland, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Shepherd. It's June, and it's summer, and we are here in Huntsville ISD, so we thought it might be fun to bring you as many of the sights and sounds of Huntsville ISD from the last couple of weeks in a short, quick, compact video. Look closely, and you'll see some of our newest Hornets from a photo session from a recent new employee orientation, some of our classroom teachers dancing and singing "Staying Alive" during a Capturing Kids Hearts training, as well as our kids, our kids attending HEEP, the... attending our athletic department's summer workouts, summer school, GT camp, and our Emergent Bilingual Summer Camp. And of course, supporting us as always is our transportation and child nutrition departments. This video runs about a minute and a half total, which it occurred to me earlier when I was writing this, is less time than it took me to share this introduction. So that said, we really hope you enjoy it. That was awesome, dude.
Thank you, Matthew, for sharing that with us. Now we have staff recognitions. Yep.
Surely do.
Do you want us down here, Shannon? Where do you want us?
Yes, y'all can come in. Absolutely. All of you come up. You're being inducted into the presentation portion of our meeting. President Holland, Board of Trustees, Dr. Shepherd, we have a few special presentations to share with you this evening. Our first is our staff recognition. Tonight, we celebrate and honor a Huntsville ISD employee who arrived at just the right time, and he's made a lasting impact ever since. Jonathan Reed joined Huntsville ISD in the summer of 2023 and immediately stepped in and stepped up to support one of the most high-profile efforts in recent district history, the grand opening and inaugural season of our very first Huntsville ISD stadium. Jonathan, why don't you start making your way up here beside me? You know the drill. Acting like you don't know the process. Jonathan's calm presence and technical expertise were essential to that milestone's success. That momentum carried into soccer and track seasons, plus the opening of our new baseball and softball complex, where Jonathan again played a key role behind the scenes. Jonathan would be the first to credit the techs who work with him, a dedicated support crew whose behind-the-scenes efforts help ensure that our shows, ceremonies, and live events run smoothly. That said, Jonathan is the person responsible for those productions, and we deferred to him to make the call last August when we were proud to open the new Performing Arts Center for our district convocation. It was perfectly suited, as this was the moment when our faculty and staff had the first opportunity to enjoy and experience the new space. After that premiere, the pack was closed for project completion and finishing touches in preparation to host all of our student productions for the holidays. Jonathan collaborates closely with our theater department, as well as our band, choir, and dance programs, helping them bring their performances to life with the care and quality they deserve. He trains students in live event productions, offering hands-on experience that builds both skill and competence. Beyond his production skills, Jonathan is also a very gifted graphic designer. Most notably, he created the State of the District brochure, a polished professional publication that Dr. Shepherd had long envisioned and was finally able to share, thanks to his creative execution. Additionally, across the district, Jonathan supports a variety of departments with their webpages, graphics, and visual communication, always with a conscientious eye for detail. With prior experience at Sci Fair, ISD's Berry Center, and years of teaching production at Sam Houston State, thankfully, we stole you, Jonathan brings a deep well of expertise to our district. But more than that, he brings patience, compassion, and quiet leadership, always working to make others look and sound their best while remaining in the background himself. Tonight, we bring Jonathan Reed into the spotlight to thank him for all he does to help Huntsville ISD build champions. We are so proud to name you Huntsville ISD's Employee of the Month for June 2025. Congratulations. Matthew would like to say a few words, and he has some very special people here tonight to share in this...
So we're surprising him. He didn't know anything about this, so if he acted surprised, that was real. He wasn't faking it. So his wife Carrie and his daughter Hannah are actually in a no-cell phone coverage zone, which we just realized because we were trying to FaceTime them. So we have a picture, right? But what we do have is we have his daughter Emily and family friend Coria, and so we're going to take a few pictures. Oh, and of course, you can do it.
I didn't prepare this far.
You don't have to be prepared. Off the cuff. You don't have to.
What you said about my production team, and I couldn't do what I do without them. So with Matthew and the production team and the support of the district, it truly is what I do is a team effort. So it's not me I give credit to them. So I couldn't do it without them and the support of everybody in the district, so, and my family. That puts up with it. So, thank you.
Part of the deal is I wanted to apologize, not face-to-face, because it'd be a waste of time, because Jonathan and I just realized yesterday morning that we have the same conversations with our family, which is, I thought you were going to be home by now. No, I'm not home. I haven't left yet. So a lot of weird hours, long hours, it's just the nature of production. So I wanted to apologize and appreciate, show my appreciation to your mom, Carrie, or would you rather know that I said this part?
To your mom.
Congratulations. I'll give thanks to you. Congratulations. Do you want to go get the pen, and y'all have some pictures? He was like, I know you didn't. And there's a gift card from Ace Hardware, Parker County Ace Hardware. Have fun spending that. All right, we have one more, just a quick, just a quick little special presentation from the Huntsville High School Hornet Yearbook. Their program had a very successful year, and they wanted to share with the board that their goal for this year was selling 275 yearbooks. They sold 250 and have a double-digit waiting list of people willing to buy the rest at full price. It's considered a sellout, with the exception of the complimentary copies provided annually to our school board members, our superintendent, the communications department, the Huntsville High School library, and the Hornet Yearbook classroom. The 2024-2025 yearbooks have officially arrived, and you will find your complimentary copy at your seat with a special note inside from the yearbook crew. The yearbook team expresses their appreciation to each of you for your valued support of their program. This year's success is attributed to everyone being involved from start to finish. While the senior editors led the charge, everyone from the freshman students on up played a part with huge contributions in the area of photography, writing, editing, marketing, social media, and sales. Since the yearbooks are now here, the yearbook team wanted to try to do something a little different and fun for passing out the yearbooks. They have planned a Fun Distribution Day for next Tuesday, June the 24th. For a couple of hours in the morning and a couple of hours in the evening, the Hornet Yearbook team will be passing out the purchased yearbooks at the Duck Pond. Where is the Duck Pond? That is at the same Houston Memorial Museum complex. They'll be playing games and giving away pizza to people who bought yearbooks, and encouraging students to plan to meet up with their friends and do yearbook signing, and something a little bit different that our students have perhaps missed out on in recent years. Then, Mr. Tom Waddell, who's their yearbook advisor, is going to be on campus next Wednesday and Thursday, distributing yearbooks to those who can't make the Fun Distribution Day. So help them spread the word. You'll start seeing their posts on social media, and I told them that we would be happy to share, and we all congratulate the Hornet Yearbook team on a job. Well done. Thank y'all. Yes. Thank you. And they really are pretty, and they're very nice inside, and the print, you can read, and I think they've done a really great job. That's it. Thank y'all.
Okay, thank you for that. We are skipping our normal recess because usually we have a crowd that needs to disperse, and we thought we'd just keep marching on. I think most will be excited that we are doing that to keep this going smoothly. We now have a public hearing. We will have a public hearing on our Texas Online Preparatory Elementary School Turnaround Plan, and the presenter for that would be Mr. Forney, Ms. Andrews, and others. Thank you, Mr. Forney.
Yes, sir. Good evening, President Holland, Board of Trustees, and Superintendent Dr. Shepherd. We have a presentation this evening. It's going to be presented by Mr. Timothy Wade. He's the Assistant Principal for the Tops Elementary Campus. He'll be coming up at this time. There's information about the turnaround plan for Tops Elementary. Mr. Wade.
All right, good evening. Like I say, my name is Timothy Wade. I am the Assistant Principal at Tops Elementary School, and it's my pleasure to be here tonight. Drove four hours just to see y'all, so I'm glad to be here. So if you go to the next slide, because I have the privilege to present tonight our turnaround plan for Tops Elementary. As you can see there, due to the ratings in 2018 and 2023, 2023, we've had to develop a campus turnaround plan now that the scores are out for, have been released for 2023. And I want to begin by saying that how excited I am to present this to you. I know that a turnaround plan may not be the coziest of topics, but it's one that I firmly believe in, and I'm very grateful that we get to share with you tonight. As you can see, as we looked at creating our plan, there are several root causes that we've identified for the performance of these years, and just the top three, alignment concerns and curriculum instruction, the ineffective execution of RTI models, and also the rapid enrollment growth we've had over the past couple of years, and we've seen more and more students wanting to join our school. If you want the next slide. On this slide, you'll see that we have the timeline in which we've... The time and the action that we've taken to create our turnaround plan, and we can read that for yourself, but we have made sure that we have involved all stakeholders, from parents and teachers and, of course, campus leaders, to make sure that we are recreating a plan that's beneficial to Tops and for Huntsville. And of course, we have been in contact with the administrators here at Huntsville ISD as well. If you want the next slide. Four key strategies I wanted to point out to you tonight. As you can see there, the first strategy was to improve teacher training on effective instruction and assessment, make sure that we have true coaching sessions, that we grow on them. On an anecdotal note, I've had the privilege of serving at Tops Elementary for two years, and like I'll preview here in a second, I know the plan is to looking out for the next two years. And we are, we're ready to strike while the iron's hot. We're really excited about some of the changes we've made in the growth mindset. Some of those improvements include the second strategy, to continue to build momentum in our high-impact PLC practices, and then strategy three, to improve alignment and rigor on campus-based assessments, and of course, data analysis in PLCs. For the past two years, we've had the wonderful privilege of working on the solution tree and really making sure that we get our PLC processes taken care of and do them effectively. Data-driven instruction, growth mindsets, and like I mentioned a second ago, this is an exciting time because I know we're at the point, like I said, striking with irons hot, making sure that we truly are building capacity within our teachers, meeting the students' needs, and really becoming a firm PLC campus. And that leads us to the fourth strategy of individualized data plans, you know. The funny thing is in education, data is not a four-letter word. Data is something that is very important, and it's very useful, not only as educators and administrators, but also to be able to give that to our students, that they can see where they're at, they can see the progress they're making, that they know their strengths and their challenges. And as you read through these strategies, I want to impress upon you that one of the things we're really looking at doing as we work through this growth mindset is saying, let's see what the data tells us, but let's also make sure we have the next action step. One thing I like to share is whenever we do coach our teachers and we talk about those data-driven decisions we need to make, is we always look at what, in my mind, I like to think of pluses, deltas, and prescriptions. The pluses, what are the things we're doing well? Let's celebrate those and make sure we keep doing them. The delta's the challenges that we have, what are the things we need to do, but those in tandem to go to the next part and say, what's the prescription? What's the next actionable step that we need to take? And we are in that mindset now, especially now during our turnaround plan. Next slide, please. Like I mentioned a little while ago, just in the progress monitoring, we have outlined a two-year plan. And in my mind, I like this because I've been at Tops Elementary for two years, and I'm looking forward to the next two years. I look forward to the growth that we continue to have. Data will be collected on average every two months, and data analysis meetings with campus improvement teams to be held to discuss, and again, make sure it's actionable, to look at all the gaps we might have and the interventions that we might require. And then just the ongoing process that we'll share to the broader campus community, to all our stakeholders, our parents, teachers, students, other administrators. So that's our plan that we have thus far. And any questions?
Board members, do we have any questions? I do. You mentioned one of the root causes was the rapid growth from, that, you know, transpired, I would assume during COVID, a lot of growth during COVID, but can you kind of articulate the numbers for us? What that growth looked like on the student side, plus onboarding teachers as well?
Of course. So in the previous school year, we were, we ended our enrollment about 750 students in the third through fifth grade. In previous years, it's exactly like you said, sir. It was after the little COVID bump, we had about 1,500-plus, and it was a constant enrollment because it was an option that many parents wanted to take. We are anticipating, of course, there's always a further desire to come onto a virtual campus, and so we are ready to expect them. Because we have had ongoing enrollment in the past, then, of course, that would necessitate that we would have to onboard teachers throughout the school year, and so that's something that we've definitely flagged as a root cause of saying, we got to make sure we build the capacity, you know, definitely build the ship as the enrollment's building itself, right?
What is the student-to-teacher ratio for online versus in-person?
And previously, this previous year, it was 55 to 1, and this year, it's going to look at being 65 to 1. And I want to add to that, that, you know, we offer both synchronous and asynchronous instruction. So when you look at a 65 to 1 student ratio, that is per teacher, but there's also, we can bolster our instruction not only through the synchronous courses, which our kids are obliged to attend, they are required to attend, but we can also help with some of that key instruction through our asynchronous portion as well.
Mr. Langley?
You had it. You had it. Hit it one more time. There it is. You're good. Man, that's magical. If you can see, Mr. Forney, you'll be able to help me up here. At one time, when all this started in the process on the online, one of the requirements was the students had to come out of public education to go and, is that still the rule? Or do y'all take homeschool? Tell me what y'all are taking now.
From what I understand, it was from a public education, they'd had to be previously enrolled. I know with the legislation that's just passed, I'm not quite sure what that is now, but I can find y'all an answer and send it to you. But I know in the past, yesterday, it was that they previously had to be enrolled in a Texas public school.
I'd be interested to know if that rule's still in place.
Yes, sir.
I didn't see any legislation this time changing any of that.
I know there was some of the attendance thing, and from what I've gathered, that was on the floor, but I'll, I can get an answer for you. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Any other comments? Mr. Wade, thank you for your report. We appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
That is the presentation. Ms. DeGon, do we have any public comments for this section?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. Do, we'll move on to a general public comment. Do we have any registration for general public comment?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. We will move on to our items requiring board action. Board members, we do have quite a few on the consent agenda that were included in your packet, and we did have some physical copies on some that were updated as well. We have a motion for consent. Mr. Langley, for the motion, do we have a second? Ms. Burris, a second. Any comment on consent? And there are none. All those in favor of consenting agenda, raise your right hand. Those not in favor, same sign, and that is passed. Thank you very much. Item 18 is going to be, or I'm sorry, item B is going to be a considerate board approval of updates for the 2025-2026 compensation plan and hiring schedule. Dr. Shepherd?
Thank you, President Holland.
Thank you, President Holland. JT, can you come turn my mic off on? Thank you, President Holland. We're very excited to make this presentation tonight. I alluded in my earlier comments about it being a legislative year. We love to be able to announce pay increases, compensation plan changes in April. Obviously, during a session like this where there was so much focus on public education legislation and things specifically related to compensation, we were forced to wait until the session ended. There's some really, a lot of great news in this with that. I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Dixon to start the presentation.
Thank you very much, Dr. Shepherd, President Holland, Board of Trustees. It is definitely a great day to be a Hornet. Coming to you tonight to discuss and really go through our recommendation for our compensation plan and hiring schedule for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Do I have a clicker, or are you gonna do it for me? Like right there, we'll just do it like that. So every year, just to give a background for those going through this process for the first time, and just as a reminder for everyone, whenever we are going through compensation and discussing about next year and what does that plan look like, we develop annual recommendations based on the traveling of the, of the year, what we've seen, different gaps, different things that we need to fill. And then also, most importantly, financially, what our CFO and Dr. Shepherd and the team composes in terms of what is the recommendation from the annual budget. This year was a little different than that process, obviously, first, it's a legislative year, and so there are mandates that are already required. But then B also, this year, we decided to do a TASB comprehensive salary study. And in that particular study, TASB not only analyzed our current processes, our current salaries, but also compiled a market study using Sam Houston State University, using Wyndham School District, using surrounding districts. And then also market and generated and used all of that data in order to share and show us exactly where we are and where we stand financially. When we talk about being competitive for salaries and what we, and where we are in discussion of how we compensate our team. Now, the goals of any compensation is to align pay structures with market standards. And so the TASB comprehensive salary study helped us to recognize long-term employees. And so there's always an emphasis to honor those individuals that have been a part of our system. And then also apply best practices for future hires. And really analyze what we do when we talk about different raises, or when an individual receives a promotion, or just all of our practices in general, in order to obviously stop compression, but also to make sure that we are competitive when we get into the world of recruiting and honoring our individuals. So that's the background. So here's some general comments and general updates and changes that we. All right, there we go. So the first thing that we want to bring to the table is that our certified teacher's starting salary will increase from fifty thousand to fifty-two five hundred. That's what we are recommending, and that is without funding from the legislature. So as you know, from my understanding, your time in San Antonio, you're aware of the different legislative mandates that have been placed on school districts. And when we talk and discuss raises, that does not include year zero, year one, year two. And so the great news, as I stated, it's a great day to be a Hornet, is the fact that we have decided in order to honor those individuals by raising our starting salary, and we are going to use local funds to compensate and make salary adjustments for teachers who are excluded from the legislative raises. And I think that's a compliment to the work, to the financial, or the fiscal responsibility that you have had in the past. And then also the generation of what we can to move towards the future. And so that is one key component. And then also, non-certified teachers will have a separate salary schedule with a lower starting salary per legislative mandate. In addition, our goal is to start a separate schedule in order to incentivize individuals to remain certified or to become certified within the system. And so those are some updates, some additional updates. General pay increases for all non-teacher positions will be applied based on the new midpoint of the proposed pay grade. Now, this is different. This is different than we've ever done before, because normally, or in the past historically, whenever we've talked about general pay increases or raises, it has been a percentage on the actual salary. This will be different this year because the percentage will be based on the midpoint. Now, once again, the TASB salary, when we analyzed our pay structures, realized that our midpoints were lower. So we have also increased our midpoints, our minimum, our midpoints, and our maximum. So that means our minimum salary for any individual coming into our system has increased. And so we wanted to stay competitive in the market, that means the midpoint has increased. And so the raise that has been recommended, the five percent, which is unique at this time in year, this time in school districts, is very unique and complimentary that we are able to recommend a five percent will be on the new midpoint. And so that is something that is, something that, that we want you to consider and really look forward to. And we think, most importantly, this will be very beneficial for our employees. In addition, the midpoint also, when those raises are applied, or when those salary increase, has a significant assistance for employees, our hourly employees and employees who are on, on the spectrum. When you use raises based on actual salary versus midpoint, the midpoint raise, it helps move those individuals along faster and together as opposed to actual. So it's a really practice that is used within school districts to practice and us moving towards in that direction, especially this time of year. It's very complimentary to the, to the work that you have done in the past. We've also decided to start the celebration, the development of the two hundred twenty-six day calendars. And that is to allow and generate pay separation between some positions. And then it also creates a natural progression of career pathways within our district. So the goal here, using that particular calendar, we have a two-twenty and a two-forty, and now the two twenty-six day calendar will allow us to continue to generate pathways as move forward. And two twenty-six day calendar is calendar that's oftentimes used in numerous districts. We'll go to the next slide. So let's, I will talk briefly and give a highlight about the teacher and hiring schedule, and then Dr. Shepherd's gonna get a little more detailed about the significance of that. So as I stated, certified teaching starting salary will be fifty-two five. Non-certified teacher starting salary, those individuals that we hired that are not certified at this time, that salary scale will be fifty thousand. But our non-cored, non-certified teachers will follow our certified scale. So who are those individuals? Those are individuals that teach CTE. Those are the individuals that come to our schools, come to our CT classes with outside experience, with field experience. We still want to highlight and recognize the work that they have done and the value that they bring to the table. So their salary scale will be very similar to the scale of our certified teachers. And then we're gonna make adjustments based on retention and the state guidelines. And so our goal here, when making those adjustments, as you'll see here, we'll get a little more detailed, will be based on state guidelines, but also we're going to go even a step further. And I'm gonna let Dr. Shepherd kind of take over from there, from that part.
So I do get the, I do get the, I don't think this thing's on. Is it on?
It's on, it's, are you?
My light's on, am I on, Dr. Green? Okay, all right, we're, we're on, they say I'm on, that's great. I do get the privilege of talking and some more specifics about our teacher pay increases. We, with the, can we go forward?
She's clicking.
Nope. I'm telling you. Yeah, there we go.
There we go.
So we do have several slides on the teacher pay changes. And this, quite frankly, is kind of the biggest news story coming out of this, this recommendation. So we know that there was a lot of discussion in Austin about specific teacher pay increases. And obviously, we will implement the mandated funded pay increases at certain rungs. We've decided to recommend a much deeper and broader pay increase for teachers. So, starting with the first bullet, the legislature is funding a twenty-five hundred dollar increase to the hiring schedule for teachers with three to four years of experience and four thousand dollars for teachers with five or more years experience. Our recommendation includes a district-funded increase, as Dr. Dixon mentioned earlier, of twenty-five hundred dollars to the hiring schedule for the zero to two-year teachers that were left out of the legislative plan. If you kept up with the, the session, there was no money sent to districts for this group of teachers. It was very specific in their plan that, that the legislature felt like year three was where a lot of teachers left their profession. Year five was kind of another benchmark, that's why they targeted those two points of the hiring schedule. But we certainly want to also maintain our competitiveness for our rookies, first and second-year teachers. We also recommend additional local increases to the hiring schedule above the new legislative funding for years three through thirty, ranging from twenty-eight hundred dollars to six thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. So that would be in addition to. So there would be some rungs of our hiring schedule that would see a ten thousand dollar increase between the legislative money and the local funding that we would add to that. So I'm gonna kind of quantify some of it as we go through this. So adding those local funds will result in a five to twenty percent increase in our teacher hiring schedule. Years three and four see about an eleven percent increase. The peak being in those years where we felt like we were not in a good market position, according to the TASB study. So we're pouring more money into that, that area, those five to fifteen years. So you're looking at a fifteen to twenty percent increase in the hiring schedule there. With our most senior rungs, where we actually were still pretty competitive in the market, would still see a twelve percent increase to make the rungs make sense for us. All returning teachers will receive the legislative increase if they qualify for it, so that's three up, so zero, one, two, do not. Plus, the locally funded adjustment to ensure they're equal to or greater than the new hiring schedule. So I want to stop for a moment on this one. So one of the things that can happen over time in a district, especially when you move to a hiring schedule model, which the district did before my time, I'm not sure when that, when that switch happened. When you move to a hiring schedule model, if you're not careful with how you implement raises or in year, in lean years, which Huntsville had some lean years with no raises, then you can get upside down, where a returning teacher of ten years' experience, for example, might make less than a new hire with ten years of experience. Four years ago, Paul, was it, Huntsville three, six years ago, time flies. So three sessions ago, we used that funding bill to right that ship. So we fixed those issues where a teacher could literally leave the district and reapply and get a raise. We fixed that. But that's what that bullet speaks to, is we're gonna make sure that when we apply the raise to returning teachers, that that raise will keep them at or above the hiring schedule for their years of experience. Does that make sense? That was kind of my East Texas way of explaining that, so hopefully that, that kind of landed. But that's a really important part of the plan. We want to make sure that we don't over-adjust the hiring schedule and leave current employees behind. So these adjustments in total will greatly enhance our competitiveness with other districts in our region and beyond. And we have done some models where we've run our proposal against neighboring districts, and we fare very well. So this is kind of the shocking element, okay? So this is teachers. The new starting salary of fifty-two thousand five hundred is up five percent. So that, again, is totally funded by us, that's not funded by the legislature. That's a, that's a, a five percent increase is, in most years, you go, that's a good one, right? I mean, five percent's a number we like to hear as employees. The hiring salary for a five-year veteran is up twenty percent. From fifty-one thousand six seventy-five at the beginning of last year to sixty-two thousand dollars this year. Because that's, that's a life-changing difference. That is a monumental leap for us, and, and quite frankly, a pretty aggressive and bold leap financially for us to, to be able to make that move in one year. This next bullet is kind of my favorite. So in twenty-five, twenty-six, this current hiring schedule, if approved and adopted tonight, a teacher hired with eleven years of experience will earn sixty-five thousand dollars coming in the door this school year. A year ago, you had to have twenty-five years of experience to break sixty-five K. So you're talking about a massive shift in pay and funding into the, the heart of our teacher hiring schedule. And the hiring schedule for a thirty-year veteran is still up twelve percent, as I mentioned. So from sixty-eight five twenty-five, which was our top hiring salary, to seventy-seven thousand dollars. So again, that's a pretty monumental leap to take that on in, in one budget cycle in one year. With a lot of help, and I will always give credit where it's due, the legislature definitely helped us a ton with those dedicated teacher raises and some other funding changes to the district. We, we did have to do a lot of work internally, though, to make sure that we could add those local funds at all those rungs to increase our competitiveness in the middle of our pay scale. Turn it back over to Dr. Dixon.
Yes, sir. One of the other factors that was presented at the budget workshop was the increase in substitute pay. And so that will go ten dollars each rung. So we are moving from eighty-five dollars to ninety-five dollars on one of our tenures, from ninety-five dollars to a hundred and five dollars, and a hundred five dollars to a hundred fifteen dollars, just depending on being a long-term, whether you're certified, whether you have a degree as a substitute. And so that is another increase that we feel is very, very, keeps us competitive, but also allows and celebrates those substitutes that have been with us, but attracts other substitutes. We get a, quite a few, from a recruiting standpoint, there are quite a few Sam Houston students, individuals that are still here that need to substitute. It is, in a lot of ways, one of our recruiting tools. And so if we could market and use that and help compensate them, that is better. This next slide is where I want us to take a little time and really go through the actual packet, an actual book. You should have a booklet there with all of the new numbers and all of the information that we discussed. And I really want to go through and, and, and really go page by page and make sure that I highlight, possibly answer questions, and just so that we can see exactly what we are discussing. And so this first page is really a summary of the presentation that we just talked about. There's analysis of some of our new positions that are coming into our team, where we talk about the new two hundred twenty-six day calendar, some of those employees that will be employed under that. We are adjusting our dean of instruction days to meet that two hundred twenty-six day calendar for middle school and high school. Now, that is for new hires. So that's the, our current employees who are on those calendars will not be impacted or held, they will be held harmless. But our new employees that are coming into will start to analyze and use that calendar. When we talk about our directors, we are looking at increasing sales days for our AEP and our DAEP for that, Sam. And then we're going to have a new executive director of community engagement that we are looking forward to. So those things are highlighted in red in your packet. So I just want to make sure that if you go to page three, where it talks about the administrative professional pay plan, so you can see exactly those new positions that are, have been placed on there. In addition, these are the new minimum midpoint and maximum pay ranges for our administrators. If you continue to go through your packet and you look at the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six new hire guide for teachers, in this particular, this is exactly the new scale that we are having. And this is what I highlighted by Dr. Shepherd in terms of what an employee coming into our district at year eleven, what they would make, where we highlighted that sixty-five thousand on that particular, using that as an example. In addition, there's a scale for our non-certified individuals there, where they're starting at fifty thousand. And what does that look like as we want to do? Our goal, hopefully, if individuals will notice that, hey, if I've, you know, I'm a DOI teacher here, and I've had, you know, some years, and our goal is to move forward where all of our teachers that are not certified become certified. But hey, there is an incentive that we're trying to build in by placing those by each other that, in terms of what you could possibly make as a non-certified versus a certified teacher. And once again, we're talking about those individuals that are not in the CTE programs. If we turn and look at our clerical paraprofessional pay plan, in this particular pay plan, once again, it is highlighted, but it's once again, it is highlighted, but it is also a change in terms of how individuals, the starting salary, the midpoint, and the maximum. And so these particular, uh, best practices have kind of showcased where individuals fall on the scale. And then finally, our auxiliary pay plan for our individuals, for our food service workers, our custodians, our manager, warehouse, our electricians. Uh, these individuals have also, there's been an increase in those salaries in terms of where it starts and where individuals will fall on the compensa- on, in our compensation and on our pay plan. So I just wanted to give that information to you, but let me, let me pause and, and see if there are any immediate questions that I can answer. We know that this is a lot of information, but I definitely want to make sure, um, that you have as much information so that I can answer as many questions or any questions that you may need.
Before I, I knew generating questions, but, and a couple of other points of clarification for the board. So when you look at the minimum midpoint, maximum ranges for all of these pay grades, so all of those shifted upward four percent. And then the raise that, for non-teachers that, um, Dr. Dixon referred to, is a five percent of midpoint range, raise. So what that means for an incumbent, uh, employee at any level that's a non-teacher, that raise is five percent of the adjusted midpoint, which is gonna be a bigger raise than if you applied, applied the five percent to their actual salary. So that's one of the ways that we are, that's one of the ways that the TASB model helps ensure that your incumbents stay up above new hires. It also increases, the pay increases for many of the work groups that we've been targeting over the past few years, trying to get their pay up. So that kinda exponentially increases those groups when you do that. So I know that this document doesn't have the old pay scale to the new pay scale. So that's why I wanted to explain that to you, that every one of the numbers there is a four percent increase over the last comp plan. And then all the red that you see, those aren't new positions. They're red many times because of the day changes that are pointed out up there. And then you see the new, uh, red pay minimum mid and max for those positions too, because those weren't in the plan before. Does that make sense?
Not a question, but just a comment. I think when we were in budget workshop, knowing how the, the legislative plan was leaving out certain groups, that for us, all the hard work that's been done over the years along the way to get salaries up and balanced, uh, having this salary assessment and then, uh, adjusting to the midpoint, uh, I think is a really, crucial step to make sure that we're not allowing any more gaps to, to, to occur and keeps everything current. So I really appreciate, I know it took a lot of work, uh, from all, Mr. Brown, Dr. Dixon, Dr. Shepherd, all that were involved in that, um, a lot, a lot of work to do that spreadsheet work, right?
We, we've had, definitely had spreadsheets. Not as bad as Huntsville three's spreadsheets. These were pretty, pretty in-depth, uh, spreadsheets. And, and, and then there's a heavy lift to go too, because our system, our, our system is not set up to implement a raise like this because we've been doing raises on actuals forever. So the next step is creating the system in HR and payroll to implement this. So we've started on that, but until board approval, we have just kind of been working in the background on that.
Members, any other questions?
Mr. President.
Mr. Langley.
I, you know, I, I kinda feel like I was in church Sunday and the preacher was preaching at me. I, I think the superintendent had me nailed over here and kinda backed up against Mr. Forney. But I, I, I wanna know, you know, this is great. This is the best thing in my, how many years? We're giving a raise that make a difference for our people, and that's what's so important. But the thing I wanna understand, and I know the people out there and every other place wants to understand, and I appreciate that explanation that you gave about some of our people that I have pushed for to give them seven, eight, nine, we're looking at a nine or ten percent pay raise there. But the question's on my mind and will always be, how do you determine the midpoint? Are, are we set up in some type of scale that says this person falls in the minimum range, this person falls in the mid, medium range, and this one is JT Langley that's been on a job for thirty-something years in a high range? What, what determines those numbers? How do you set those numbers?
calculation. The calculation is set forth based on experience. So when you hire someone, you know, I'll just, I mean, I happen to be on the page that's got, um, this is the clerical paraprofessional pay. So if you, if you hire a new receptionist at the elementary school, that's a hundred ninety-three day calendar, and you start with the minimum salary, and then you apply experience at one point five percent, I believe it is, of the minimum for every year of like experience in that job role. So it's a straight-up calculation. It's not a-
One point five to how many?
Years, to the years of experience in that job role. So that way, if, if, if you and I were both hired to be receptionists at the elementaries on the same day, heaven help those principals that made the decision, but if you and I got hired and I've never been a receptionist ever in my life, have no work experience that relates to that job, I'm gonna make the minimum salary. You've been a receptionist in multiple schools and different places, you've got job experience in that job role for forty-four years. Forty-four years. Then the calculation is for, one and a half percent of that minimum times forty-four, added back to that minimum, and that's your pay. So you're gonna make a whole lot more money than me because of your experience. So it is not subjective, it is, it is very quantifiable.
But, but that applies to all positions. That's one point five, whether it's assistant superintendent-
Correct.
Or to a janitor.
Correct.
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay.
The formula's the same.
So wanna add on to JT what you mentioned too. Now, Dr. Dixon, if I believe you, I heard you correctly, in the salary assessment, you did mention you're not just looking at other districts, especially in non-teacher roles.
Correct.
So receptionists, plumbers-
Right.
Whatever job role, right?
Correct, correct.
You're looking across the Huntsville market and identifying what, where those are at. And, because that's the, that's the competitive-
That is also-
Market that we need to be in, right? So that, that was done.
That is, that is correct. That's part of the TASB study, and that is, you know, when we, when we discuss technology, uh, techs, things of that nature. I mean, there, there's, that's, that's part of who pulls and who gives, and so they had to analyze that information also.
And I think it's to be noted, obviously, with two larger institutions that employ those roles, we have to be in line with that, so.
Mr. President.
Also, let, let me ask one more thing, or before I forget, John, I apologize that I cut you off. When we were in San Antonio, we heard so many districts. This is, this is what's so amazing about what Huntsville ISD's doing. Most of those school districts are giving what the state said they must give to teachers, and that's it.
That's it.
That's it. And I, you know, the team that's here, uh, I need to know things sometimes to figure it out in my mind, but it has nothing to do with those numbers I was looking at to compare to what I think about this pay raise. This is an amazing thing, and y'all worked hard. Paul, you have beat up everybody in this district to get this kind of pay raise. I'm talking about draining their budgets, but, uh, it, it is such an amazing thing. And just thank y'all for what you could do.
It is a great day to be a hornet. I, I, I do want to say thank you, uh, to our team, who's really, as we talked about, individuals in the back. Um, it's Rachel Branch and this is Demetrius Dickie for all of the work that they did in, uh, getting this, all these numbers and getting this together, and then just as a whole cabinet, really kind of knuckling through to make sure, um, that we get some checkmarks in terms of getting this recommendation together.
And Mr. Hendrix.
Yeah, just one question. Uh, this, this type of pay scale actually makes a lot more sense to me, just 'cause what I'm used to professionally with the, uh, minimum midpoint and maximum.
Yes, sir.
But, um, how are these, these scales shifted? Is it based on, um, student enrollment in school districts? Because I would imagine that, um, you know, Hu- Houston ISD has a much different minimum midpoint and maximum. So I'm just wondering how those, how that shifts, how it's determined, which school districts get these minimum midpoints and maximums?
You know, there, there's a level of, uh, subjectivity in terms of emphasizing what is, there's, is a little bit of that across districts. If I'm answering your question, are you meaning the development of or just the concept of?
So, so today, we're saying that this is our, our minimum, our midpoint, our maximum. And we've gone up over that, and that's awesome. I'm not arguing at all, I think it's fantastic. I agree a lot of what JT said, this is great. I was just curious, what would ever raise these scales for us in the future as far as the minimum midpoint and maximum? If we had an inflow of twenty-five hundred students, would that increase what that minimum would be? Like what, how, how does, how is it determined?
Theoretically, I would, I would say that.
The, the simple answer to that is, is that, you know, funding is not equitable across all districts. And it's not intentionally that way, it's just the way the formulas work. So, um, the, the best way to increase, um, revenue is to increase enrollment and attendance. Because that's the foundation of our funding, right? Is that the more kids you have and the more often they come to school, the more money they generate in the funding formula. And then there are all these other intricate details, uh, that we could take a master class on, on how the funding formulas work. So how do, how does some districts, um, pay more than others? It has a lot to do with their inherent costs of operation. So for us, um, some of the things that harm us is that we have, um, an exponentially overweight, um, amount of land that is not taxable in Huntsville. So between the university and TDCJ land and state and national forests, we, we have a lot of land that we don't earn any money on. And you, well, how does that hurt you? Well, it hurts you in a lot of ways. One is that it impacts your tax base, and then the other thing it does is it creates this huge geographic area. So we operate, uh, the example I always love to give is Cy Fair and Us, because we couldn't be any different, uh, any more different. We have six thousand kids and six hundred and forty square miles. And they have a hundred and twenty thousand kids and a hundred and eighty-four square miles, which means they've got a whole bunch of rooftops with a lot of kids in them. And they don't have to travel far, for example, to pick them up in a bus. I mean, they can fill a bus in a curbed and gutted subdivision within five minutes of the campus that those kids will attend. You gotta pack breakfast and lunch to fill a bus in Huntsville. I mean, you know, you, we gotta go a long way to fill up a bus and bring it back. Everything we do because of our land mass and our sparsity of population is more expensive. So that's one of the things that hinders us. Having said that, I, in San Antonio, I can't tell you how many sidebars I got to have, um, with board members I knew from other districts, superintendents from other districts. This was the topic of conversation. What are you guys gonna do? Most people gave the answer JT gave, which is, we're gonna do the legislative mandated raises that are funded, and that's all we can afford to do. Most of those people, big and small, have been in multiple years of adopting deficit budgets. And they're tapped out. We've never adopted a deficit budget. And so what we've done over time is, um, the answer I give people when they, when they asked me at conference, when I told them that, I didn't give them numbers, but I just said, you know, we're gonna tack on to the legislative raise for teachers and we're gonna take care of our zeros, ones, and twos. And we're hopefully gonna give a raise to all non-teachers as well. And they go, how in the world are you gonna do that? Well, there's a million factors. One factor is that over, over years, we have been tightening operation budgets to give incremental pay increases. So seven in a row, the first one is a result of the TRE election. So when the community voted to allow the district to use some funds for teacher raises and other employee raises, then we've tightened budgets and gotten more, um, fiscally responsible and just conservative in the way we operate the district over the years. That's helped. The bond was a huge help. So if you remember, one of the talking points of the bond was, we are hemorrhaging M and O money on systems. HVACs, roofs, maintenance of old facilities that haven't had capital improvements in two decades. When we were able to pass the bond and move some of those expenses into bond, that freed up M and O money to apply towards salaries. A really long answer, I know you're hating that you asked the question, so.
Well, actually, I, I will refashion my question, because you, you've gone off way over here, but I think you're getting away from, from what I'm, what I'm actually asking.
Okay.
Is, you said originally that, um, you know, with this min, midpoint and maximum, you got it from TASB. So how does TASB, and then we increase it. So does TASB have just one minimum, maximum midpoint? And then school districts have the leeway to increase that as they can, or does?
They look at, they look at us in, in the market-
Right, the markets.
And use our existing minimum mid-max? And then they make recommendate, recommendations to change them, which is what you see on this piece of paper. So they, there you go.
And I think the other point too is changing from, doing a flat increase on the salary-
Right.
And utilizing the midpoint as well. That helps because it keeps it aligned and balanced.
What, what TASB was doing, that, that's good, they use the market.
But the background of it is important, because quite frankly, guys, we wouldn't, take away one of those major pieces, right? Don't pass the bond, don't change the way you structure budgeting and things like that, we wouldn't be doing this today. We, we would be like all those other districts. We'd be in a multi-year cycle of deficit budgets, and we would be telling you, all we can do is the legislative raise.
Any other comments?
After my filibuster, are there any other questions?
I, I did make the comment in-
Don't look at JT.
Uh, you're, you're not pressing that button, are you, again, are you? And no, I did make the comment earlier about how in visiting with other people, uh, at the conference that, uh, you come back and you're just very grateful and blessed that you're a part of what's happening here, because, um, there's been a lot of hard work, even before I got on the board and some of us got on the board, of, of just very intentionally scrubbing the budget, doing the things necessary and refining our processes, uh, operationally that'll have allowed the fiscal management to get us to this place. And, um, there's a lot of people in a lot of other districts that are not experiencing that, and they're, they're, they're wondering how they're gonna, you know, keep things even. You know, in some large districts that you're like, man, y'all are the ones that've always had it made. And, you know, I mean, it's very surprising. So I just feel very grateful that, um, and, and blessed, uh, to be a part of all of this happening and thanking all of the people that have spent the hours crunching numbers, uh, because that's, you know, you can get dizzy doing that. And it, but again, it hadn't been just now, it's been a, it's been a work in progress. And there's still more to be done, so thank you all for what you've been doing.
Questions, comments?
I, I think we, we wore that out, so.
With that, and of course, there can still be some discussion. Our recommendation is to approve the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six compensation, compensation plan as presented, including a new teacher hiring schedule reflecting a five percent to twenty percent increase, as well as a five percent of adjusted midpoint raise for non-teaching positions. That's the recommendation and the motion- That's the recommendation and the motion that we would like from the board.
Mr. Langley for the motion and missed out for the second. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. That is none. It is passed. Thank you very much. Dr. Shepherd, Dr. Dixon. All right, I have to find my spot now. Hold on just a second. Okay, we're moving on to report and discussion items. The first couple are written only. Again, thank you for those. We will have a report from Mrs. Hassel on the Every Student Succeeds Act or ESA grant application and the grant spending review. Mrs. Hassel.
Good evening, President Holland, trustees and Dr. Shepherd. In accordance with the ESA provisions and assurances, I would like to take a few moments to provide information on the projected expenditures and provide an opportunity for public comment before submitting our ESA application, which is required by statute. So as you can see here, under statute, we are required to request for public comment before submitting our ESA application. Our application for our ESA grants is required to be submitted before July one due to several twelve-month salary employees being paid out of that grant. So this is why we have to come to you now and request this public comment. We will go through these five different program areas that all are under the umbrella of the Every Student Succeeds Act, talk through what the requirements of each of those fund sources are and what we as a district have with meeting with our stakeholders have decided we would like to spend those funds on. So the first one is our biggest pot and that is our Title I Part A funding. Our planning amount that was released by TEA is at one point eight nine two million dollars. The intent of Title I is basically to provide supplemental resources to our our students and teachers within our campuses in terms of increasing our high-quality instructional opportunities. In general, most of the time, our Title I funds have been spent on instructional coaches, instructional assistants, supporting classroom, direct classroom support. Our homeschool liaison salaries are paid for out of this fund source. We do academic tutoring, instructional supplies and books for students. We do provide some technology, professional development and consultants. Parent and family gate engagement is a requirement under ESA. This comes out of our Title I pot of money also. And then any campus-specific initiatives. Basically, whatever we're gonna spend at the district level in a reservation comes off the top of the one point eight and then is distributed to the campuses based on an allocation on their enrollment on their campuses. The next is our Title I Part D funding. This is the funding that goes to Bay's Achievement Center. Their allotment is fifty six thousand five hundred five hundred and sixty seven dollars, goodness. And Bay's uses these funds for instructional supplies and professional development. They have a new director over there that's supporting this part of the funding and have done a really great job on getting more research-based instructional supplies for those students and then also incorporating the professional development aspect of getting some teachers training and sending them to different things at Region Six and other opportunities, so. Title two, the most, the biggest piece of this is all about professional development. We also include our bilingual instructional coach, our GT coordinator salaries in there, our staff training. We send lots of folks to different trainings throughout the year. We do it also in the summer. We do instructional coaching support and then our leadership training has also come out of our Title Two. Title three is our part that Anna and I worked together on. And in this pot of money, it's at a hundred and thirty eight thousand is our planning amount for that. We have some instructional assistance, instructional supplies, tutoring, our district's summer language camp, professional development. And she also has a requirement for parent and family engagement that has to be spent out of this pot of money. Then the last bit is our Title Four Part A. This is also known as Your Well-Rounded. It was an addition in the last, I guess, six or seven years to include pieces of outside of our core curriculum. So we do spend some funds on Safety Town, social emotional learning. We do instructional supplies for music and for art, those kinds of things. We also do professional development for our counselors out of this fund source. So with that, short and sweet, I beat you, Dr. Dixon. Are there any public comments for the district to consider at this time?
Board members, are there any comments from the board?
What is usually the number we have at Bay's?
Right now, we don't have any particular kids that are coded for Huntsville that are at Bay's, that are enlisted at Bay's. We don't have any in enrollment.
So my question was about Bay's as well, but are we mandated to to fund them? Well, even if we're not, I appreciate that we we do that work.
They generate an allotment based on their locale code and what type of facility that they are. But because we are the public school district in this area and they're within our boundaries, they generate the funding, but we have to be the pass-through entity.
I'm glad that that's happening and that they get that support. It's what they do is pretty remarkable. So thank you for that. Any other questions?
We have a great working relationship with them.
So they get the money whether we have kids going there.
Correct, correct. Correct.
Because it's based on what they generate with their enrollment, no matter where the kids.
They have to send enrollment numbers through through us to the state and that's how that that pot of money is.
And if they were located in Madisonville, Madisonville ISD would have to do the same thing.
Correct, correct.
Okay. Ms. Angie, were there any public comments registered for this session? Okay, I think that's it.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
I have one more question.
Yes, sir.
The salaries that you have put under all these categories.
Yes, sir.
Are we calculating those raises into those salaries too?
Yes, sir.
And will that raise come out of the?
Yes, sir.
Grant money?
Yes, sir.
Yes, if there if the position is coded to the grant, any grant, then the funding for that salary comes from that grant.
Yes. Awesome. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Board members, our next meeting will be Thursday, July seventeenth, back on our Thursday schedule. So please note that. And then our next item, we will be going in the closed session for an administrative. Need and we will coming be coming out with a decision from that closed session. It is seven eighteen going into closed session.
Like, mic test. Oh, now it's working. Mic test, mic test. Now it's working. Look at that. I thought I broke it.
Let me get everybody situated.
All right, we are returned from our closed session. It is seven fifty-seven. I will entertain a motion for the Director of Special Education role.
I move to approve the recommendation of Dr. Stephanie Dominique as the Director of Special Education.
Okay, we have a motion for Mrs. Burris, second for Mr. Langley. Any discussion? And all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. It has passed. And entertain a motion for the role of Principal Huntsville Elementary School.
I make a recommendation that we hire Natalie Barrett as the Principal for Huntsville Elementary.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Stout.
Second.
Second by Ms. Langley. Any discussion? There is none. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. It passes. We're thankful that we have these two new individuals joining the district and look forward to meeting them soon. So, thank you very much, Dr. Shepherd, Dr. Mr. Forney, for that presentation. And members, I think that that's it for tonight. Anybody wanna? We have a motion and so moved by everybody else. All those in favor. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Sorry I got there for me, so I can seal that one.